Going to call this meeting to order for the work session of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors for February 16, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Jameson.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Treoka?
Here.
Layland?
Here. Would everyone please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended.
I'll move to the second.
Moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, the agenda is received. Item two, the budget work session, discussion and possible board action in consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year 24 Black Hawk County budget.
Good morning, and I apologize, but I had everything neatly organized on this desktop, and it's not, so it's going to take me a minute right now. It's been one of those mornings so far.
Well, at least we didn't get snow.
No, that's a great thing, yeah, so far. I hope the rest of the day.
Kathy will have money to put back into the budget.
Yeah, it's got to go to Rhodes, remember we have those big bottles? That's always a good thing. Would you like Kathy to do an update on Rhodes? Yes, that's a wonderful idea. Or anything? I'm almost ready. Or anybody else, I was going to say. You're so used to it typically. Does someone have a joke, I mean, come on? Or glasses, I apparently need bigger glasses. Maybe that's dangerous, we maybe just stay away from the joke stuff.
Yeah, I'm staying away.
I will mention, in case everybody didn't hear, that Senate File 181, which requires to recalculate the rollbacks, passed the House yesterday, so short of a governor's signature, we'll be redoing the valuations really soon.
Okay, super.
And we will lose a little taxable value because...
Mm-hmm. Thank you for making my presentation obsolete. We have to laugh. I know, and I do appreciate it. Apparently Kathy doesn't want to give us a road update. Why, are you not ready? I'm ready, I really am ready.
I've got much to say, I'm sure the guys are on standby, there's just light flurries right now, so we're probably not out on the roadway, I have not talked to Wayne.
Yeah, I would expect that, yeah, as long as we see no snow, we're good. All right, well, I apologize for that, but, okay, today, we are going to take our first look at the overall picture of the budget. You have a stack of handouts, and I am going to share my screen here. It is a morning today. Come on. Okay, just currently for a minute there. Okay, so these first pages, and I don't know if this is a format you are used to seeing, but it helps me to summarize all the items that I've shared with you so far. So this worksheet takes all the departmental worksheets that we have reviewed in more detail before and summarizes them. I have made a couple of corrections, and I will send updated department worksheets out to you later today with those corrections. Corrections to this already, you mean? No, to departmental things that you received earlier. There's an updated one for the Treasurer's Office and for the Sheriff's Office, just as I spent my day checking numbers yesterday, I found a couple of things I needed to correct. Will you be talking about those as well when you go through this, or just waiting until we see them? We can, as we get to the department. Okay. So, the first one, I'm just going to maybe go through that one in more detail, just so you kind of understand where I'm coming from. But the Board Office, we did review that, this does include everything that's been requested, so in addition to what I would call the normal staff increases, this would include the additional marketing position, it would include the $15,000 for the digital imaging, and about $40,000 for strategic planning. I think those are the three new things that are in that budget. And I believe those should match the worksheet you already have. After that, we have the Auditor, and the same thing, so I don't know, I can, I don't know if it's necessary... This is operational only, then, I'm assuming, unless you note that there's something else added? Correct. Yep. The Sheriff's Office, I had not gotten any overtime added to that office previously, so that budget is increased by overtime, because we know officers get held over on calls or things happen, so I have added something in there for that. And the Treasurer, I just needed a correction to their salaries. And the interesting thing, theirs kind of looks funny because they have negative tax askings, that is true, and that's because they record all the interest earnings for the county, so their interest earnings are projected to be more than their specific departmental costs, which is a good thing.
What are those invested in, those monies?
I don't see Linda here right now. You know, governments are pretty restricted in how they invest things, it's primarily going to be money market and certificates of deposit, and I think if any further comments, we will leave to Linda, who might ask her.
Ask her, yes.
Well, let me something, geez, most of the department, as I expect, to maybe be here on Tuesday as well, if they're not here today, I would expect on Tuesday, so they could answer that. That's true, yeah. And I can give her a heads up that we have the question as well. Then we have the Recorder's Office, and the same thing, their tax askings are actually We have the Attorney's Office, and you'll notice in that one, they have an entry in the column that says use of fund balance. I'm just pointing that out because that is the use of their restricted fine collections for that furniture, and some other, there's other items, but that's how much of the fund balance we needed to use for that. Then we have Human Resources, and again, that has the restructuring items included in that amount. Information Technology, you will see there's $40,000 in the fund balance column, and that is for one of their capital items that I have proposed in this draft of the budget be moved to use fund balance to fund that, and I have not put all the capital items requested in this, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we get to the bottom of this page. Maintenance, the same thing, you can see that $1,829,000, that is most of their capital request. I have left equipment in the operating side, so this is primarily non-equipment types. Then just continuing on down, I think most of these you've seen before, so I won't go through them in detail, we will jump down to Conservation, and you can see that I've put $720,000 in that use of fund balance column, and that is not all of their capital requests. All their capital requests are still in here, but I've tried to leave the equipment in what I'm going to call the operating side of this worksheet, and I'm only pulling out the larger non-equipment items to be paid for from fund balance right now.
And one of those items would be the Casey Lake restoration?
Yeah, that's the largest one, yes, and then there's the Bison Equipment and a couple other smaller things that are included in that. Yep. The next row is, I think, something that's probably new to us here. I am suggesting, I had been asked a question by Tavis about how much are vacant positions, or how much savings is there from our salaries and benefits budget to what we actually spend in the general fund? So we did some homework on that, and that has varied over the last couple of years, and realizing this is probably a difficult time to compare to because of COVID, and also change in staffing, I don't know if the salary projections are being done quite the same as I'm doing as they were before, but we did have quite a savings due to turnover in the last couple of years, varied between a million and 2 million. So this row, what I'm suggesting is that we not tax our taxpayers for 100% of the salaries. I don't want to take it out of the individual departments, because today, I can't really tell you who will have vacancies or how long they will be, so instead of trying to allocate it among the departments, and because we have fund balance that's healthy, I'm suggesting we say we're using fund balance, and hopefully, I mean, my ideal thing would be that we don't touch that, but I have that in there, and I also have added into that row, that pay adjustments pool that Amanda has spoken to you about too, so that is a net of those two items.
And that's because if we have an open position, it takes two or three months to fill it, there's a savings.
Exactly, yep, that's exactly what it's about. Then, the transfer to secondary roads is a normal thing that we do, and also, then we're transferring in from the general supplemental levy for the items that are eligible for that levy. And the other general revenue is, in the general fund, it's things like our gaming taxes, and I did bump this up, because our gaming taxes are much higher than what we budgeted them at, I think we've been budgeting them at $380,000, and I'm moving it up to $440,000, and hoping that's still conservative, actually, so gaming's up and a couple other revenue sources that are making that revenue increase. That brings our tax askings from the general basic levy, and if y'all remember, we have a $3.50 cap there, that amount is $20,914,000, $14,674. And this is all based on if we were getting our FY '24 values, as Tim already shared, I did see last night that the ugly bill has passed, and we don't quite have the details on that yet, so I didn't attempt to roll us back to the '23 valuations. That is going to create some stress on this, because that's going to read, so this 20,000, 20 million, 20.9 million is the maximum we can have under the 350, and when we roll that back, that number's going to be smaller, and we're going to have to make some adjustments. So just keep that in the back of your mind, and that's one reason I am already proposing moving some of the capital, because if I left it all in operating, we would have exceeded that $3.50 cap, unfortunately. That was not a good surprise when I realized that was happening. What happens when we do exceed that 35 cap? So your choices would be to reduce expenses, increase revenue, or dip into fund balance for operating, none of which are really appetizing, but that's the reality that we face, so. I did use most of the employee benefits that I could put in general supplemental, I already have, so I don't have a great deal of wiggle room to increase that, because that would be another option if we, you know, if there was more employee benefits that I wasn't paying with the supplemental levy, then you could add to that, but I've pretty well got that maxed out.
Is that cap just for the operating budget, or is it for the operating budget plus capital?
It would include capital if we're paying for it directly out of operating. We, you're right, Tom, we do have another option, if we chose to issue debt for it, then we can move that to the debt service levy, that would be another option that we have.
So, so far out of here, it looks like, how much are you proposing to take out of the reserves in this portion right here?
If the Board chose to do everything that departments have requested, and we use the turnover, I don't know, I don't have a good term for that, I call it turnover factor, which I know is meaningless, but if we, if you use a million of that, then you can see we'd be using 3.6 million of fund balance, should we need all the turnover. I really would not think we would, because that would mean we have every single position filled 365 days of the year, which we know is very unlikely, but you're somewhere, you know, maybe between 2.5 and 3.5 million at that point, if everybody spends all their budgets, which of course, that doesn't always happen either, but that is what's projected in here today.
Or they could go over their budgets too, and we have amendments.
That's also true, this does not, at this point, I have not planned for that situation, although it does occur. Yes, so the total levy increases $291,000 under this, that's 1.5% increase from FY '23. And then, if we move on to the general supplemental levies, I don't know if there's, again, I believe we've discussed all of these, so, yeah, there's, yes, good, my numbers match on the transfer for employee benefits, I was playing with that last night, and I thought, boy, I hope those match, they do. So our general supplemental total tax askings then for this year is $11,455,431, that's an increase of $664,000, or 6.2% from last year.
And that number's going to be obviously different with the rollbacks, is that correct? The new figures that will be coming out?
It may, the, yes, it will, the thing, the nice thing for us with general supplemental levies right now is they aren't capped necessarily at an amount, or a dollar levy amount, so I think we should be able to tax for the same amount under here, it will, the tax increase would be higher, so that's...
So that number would just change, it could be possibly higher?
Potentially, yeah, and I think your percentage increase would likely be higher, because we'll have, we'll likely, excuse me, we'll likely have less taxable value to spread the same amount of dollars over. So then, we get to the rural basic levy, which that one's a little more painful this year. You can see we have increases in the Sheriff's Office, and one of the reasons is that this is where most of our Sheriff's Deputies are paid from. In the earlier Sheriff's Department that we looked at, with, particularly with the jail, you know, they have changed a lot of positions from deputies to civil detention officers, which actually resulted in a substantial savings to the county and to the budget. We don't have that happening with these positions, so there is a large increase there. And the other thing is something that just happened late yesterday afternoon, in that Sheriff's allocation is also the county's share of the consolidated communications operations, and that Board met yesterday afternoon and elected to change their allocation method from a call and population-based method to a property valuation method. So our bill is going up about $217,000, just because of that change in formula, so we are adding extra to consolidated communications for that.
Were we the highest increase, or were the other ones increased also?
We are not the highest, in terms of percentages, I believe we were the second highest, and Dunkerton, which is a very small entity, actually has the highest increase by percentages. And if you went by straight dollars, I believe that Cedar Falls is the highest, and I didn't bring that in here with me, but I think that mine had gone up 400,000 for them.
619, I think.
Okay, maybe I'm not remembering that correctly.
And the mayor's approved all that?
The mayor's did, although the mayor of Cedar Falls did express, well, he did not approve it, the collective group did, and he did say he doesn't know if his council will approve it, but I'm not sure his council can override that necessarily, so they may, I don't know, I don't know what will happen next, maybe they'll have more communication with us. Yeah, still early. Yes. And then you can see the transfer to secondary roads in here, if you recall, last year, that was moved up to the maximum that it could be, and so this is again based on the property values, which will change based on the new law. And we also see local option tax coming into this, as you remember, 50% of our local option tax is dedicated to property tax relief, and we do that by depositing it to the rural fund. I did move that share up 200,000 this year, and there's also a couple other sources of revenue in there, which is why that increase isn't all from local option. So I did, we did try to help out the rural levy, but it still has a fairly substantial increase at 13.7%. So these are the levies that have to be voted on in our first public hearing, you probably remember, we have to have two now under a law that was implemented a couple of years ago. So our total property tax increase would be about 3% for these levies alone, basically the general, general fund, general supplemental, and the rural. We do, however, and this will also depend on what the Board might elect to do about capital projects, I also have worked on the debt service levy quite a bit, and am proposing some changes there. We are, our debt service for roads and bridges is declining by almost 50% this year, about 1.6 million, and I am, we typically, you probably remember, that we were using 50% of our local option tax was being deposited to that debt service fund for roads, and I am proposing that we change that, and instead of depositing it to debt service and being forced to issue debt for roads, that we would use that directly for road construction. We don't need it in debt service right now, and you would eliminate interest permanently, and with rates rising, you know, interest is just an expense that goes out the window. If we can afford to cash flow, I'll call it, our road construction, that would be something that we could save. Otherwise, that just, it remains, if it's allocated to debt service, it just stays there and has to be used for that, so it's not of any use to us. Right, we would have, then we would have to, order to use it, we would have to issue debt for roads, and I don't know that I see any really huge projects coming in the next few years that would require that, unless we change something, so in this current proposal, that is something I'm suggesting we do. So for this year, we would leave that debt service levy, and it still comes down slightly, but we would use, we would actually use property taxes to pay the debt service this time, and switch the local option to construction, and that's for roads and bridges. And then... Kathy, are there like large projects maybe out in the past five years? I'm just curious, like, when you mentioned that, I mean, that's probably good news, I guess, but are there some in the six to 10 that you've?
In the six to 10-year plan, there definitely could be, in the five-year plan, we don't have any large projects, and we'll be talking with you about this in the next two to three weeks, as we prepare to submit our five-year plan.
Okay.
You know, we hear from citizens every day that we should be paving this road and that road, but I generally say it's not in our five-year plan, so that is our plan for the next five years, no large projects.
Okay, great, thank you.
Michelle, I've got a question, you just referred to something about changing the funding on the local options, those decks. Are we allowed to change the language? If I recall, that was a referendum by the people?
It is a referendum, and I have reviewed that language, and it, all that language says is that it will be used for roads and bridges construction. I was a little surprised, it doesn't even refer to debt service, so that's why I think you're completely legal to use it directly for construction and not for debt service for construction.
Has Mike weighed in on, has Mike verified that?
No, I just read the language, I mean, it says it's for roads construction, so I think, I actually, I asked if they had had someone research that when they started using it for debt service, but no one knew, and so... It's the two uses we've, voters have designated. It was 50% for property tax relief, 50% for construction roads and bridges, so, yeah, I do think that's perfectly acceptable, and we can certainly have Mike look at it, too. So I've got, there's a couple more things under debt service to talk about, you may remember, we issued bonds on behalf of E-911, which is being used for new software, which I hope is also going to allow them to gain some efficiencies in their operations, and they pay that debt, so you see that as an expense and a revenue, and no tax asking. And we've done the same thing with the Solid Waste Commission, you see expense, revenue, no tax askings for the county. Then we also have just a little bit of debt service for other types of county improvements that are non-roads, that is also falling by more than half this year, so we do have another nice reduction in the debt service levy right now. Debt service tax askings are falling by 194,000, but that's roughly a 10% decrease in the tax. So our total property tax askings, with everything in it that we've talked about so far, would be at 3.3%. And if I've confused you with any of that, we can go back and review any of those, there's a lot of numbers on here, I know.
Based on the new law, that'll...
Unfortunately, yes, it will. So will you have those numbers, like, on Tuesday? Or how, I'm just cur, I know, I'm just meaning, like, so that we can start calculating accuracy.
So, yeah, the way the statute is written, if it's signed, after the governor signs it, the Department of Management would have two days to reissue the rollback order, and then after they do that, then county auditors around the state would have 15 days, trying to remember off the top of my head, it was 15 days to finish the valuations. I redid the valuations already in our test system, which I still have to do them again, and was able to get it done in a day, but I wasn't nearly as careful as I'll be when I'm doing them for real, so I'm hopeful that it doesn't take more than two or three days before we have those numbers. So we get the rollback order this Friday, early Monday, I'm hoping by the end of the next week, we'd have those numbers.
Okay.
I don't want to make promises.
No, I know, I just wanted an idea, I wondered what that timeline would look like.
In that bill, did they extend the deadline?
They did, April 30th for everyone to complete their budgets, so.
Good, let's just wait till the end of April. Sorry. Okay, can we really not do that? I don't want to do that. I think a lot of us will be ready to be done with the budget before the end of April. But what I can maybe do for Tuesday is redo this worksheet with the estimate that Tim has, I mean, it'll, it may have some tweaks to it, but it would likely be in the range. Sure, and we can go ahead with the max levies and those types of things then next... That seems to be what governments are doing, and I don't know that they're getting any pushback from Department of Management, so I think we could go ahead with it, using the '24 valuations, and then adjust it when we get to the final hearing. What were you going to say, Tim, or you started to?
I'm sorry, the Department of Management's clarified that the maximum levy resolution is not tied to your tax rate, it's tied to your tax asking, so it would be very unlikely that there would be a situation where your total tax asking would go up due to this law.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, that's true. And one thing that I should have pointed out that I didn't when we're talking about the rural basic levy, because that increases in collections is 13.7%, that would require a supermajority of the Board of Supervisors to approve that. As you probably remember, if you're at 2% or lower, it doesn't require a supermajority, this draft of the budget would show, yeah, it's going to require it probably for both. The general and supplemental right now are hovering around that 2% when they're combined, but I think we should probably assume we will need a supermajority to pass it. Both those? Both, yeah. So then I did, and I'm just going to apologize in advance, I did not have time to make this, well, that's not so bad, so that you could read it. I did, yeah, it's not, it's not as bad as I thought it was going to be. This is your hypothetical increase to the different property types, again, this is based on the '24 val- Again, this is based on the 24 values, so that's going to change once we put in the new lower evaluation numbers. These, I believe they are lower. So our county tax rate at $9.56 there, about halfway down the page. The effect on the residential property is a 5.4% increase of $16.45. The rural is a little ugly. That increases $44.12 and 8.89%. And as usual, we know our commercial and industrial properties have been winning this lottery for the last number of years now. There's, and these are all on $100,000. I sometimes use a larger one for the commercial industrial, just because those buildings tend to be higher value. But even if you double it, it's a minimal dollar increase, and the rate stays the same at .99%. Ag property, again, is tougher. That increase at $100,000 is projected at $60.30 or 7.39%. And this will be the last time I have to tell you how great the multi-residentials are benefiting, because now going forward, they will be taxed the same as residential. They're seeing a decrease of $37.74. That's a 10.5% reduction for them. That, that kind of gives you the overall picture of what we're doing. I'm going to try to switch to a different document now. Let me spray that. Al, can I have some technical assistance from the pro? I need to, oh, I need to stop, okay. Well, that would have been too easy. Yep, yep.
Is it open?
Yep.
And then just reshare again.
I see what I did wrong. Okay. I know. Okay, I'm sorry about that. I should have gotten that saved as a PDF, and I didn't. I thought then, I tried to make a list of some of the topics that the board will need to make decisions on beginning next week or whenever you're comfortable. So the first thing, and I did forget to mention this on Tuesday, the board has historically, I guess I'll say, set aside $100,000 for entities to apply for funding, places such as the Food Bank, I'm trying to think of some of the others that I've seen. But there's a list of several that you've often contracted with, and I'm going to use that term, because we all know we can't donate, we have to have a contract for services to do that. I do have 100,000 budgeted there, should you want to consider, continue doing that, and we'll have to develop, decide how we do that, an application process or whatever we're going to use.
Don't, don't they have to apply for that on the website?
I, if you want to do it the way we did it last year, yes. We have not put a new application up there because we hadn't discussed it here, so if that's.
That wasn't, okay, I, I'm sorry, I thought that was a policy the board created.
Well, that might be the newbie messing up then.
It was, yeah, I was going to say, I think, and they pulled the application down once the applications were made and said they'd be put up a later time, but I think, yeah, since this is the process we've used, and it was kind of a first time last year, this was why we're still new in this, but.
So it's just wide open, anybody can apply?
Well, right now, the application's not online.
Right.
So, but yes, I was going to say, I think that was kind of the decision last time, when Mike said it had to be contracted, there wasn't really a limitation on it just being nonprofits only. All of that seemed to be who was still applying and who we were approving, which doesn't mean, I guess, we approve anybody that we didn't want to anyway, so, but yes. But until this designation is approved, Tom, I guess, or whatever amount we would be, that we wouldn't be putting that up online again, if that's the way the board wants to know.
Wanted to make sure we were going to have money to allocate, I guess was my thought process. I wouldn't want to put an application out there and then have us decide we weren't going to follow that.
If I recall, really, there was still some left from this current year, that we were, at that time, we were planning on opening it up a second time for a second round of applications.
And I believe.
50,000. 50, I think, was left.
I think that's correct, yes. Yep, so that could also be done, you do both 23 and 24.
Okay.
And you've seen a list of new positions, and I'm going to wait and go through this list, and then I'm going to show you that updated, because there, I had to correct a couple things on that list. Then we've also, we, you have not voted yet on non-bargaining pay increases. I've budgeted that at 3%. That's the same as our bargaining units are getting. We also need to take action on the compensation board recommendations for the elected officials, and I'm sure everyone remembers, the Board of Supervisors was at 3%, and the other elected officials were at 10%. And that does include certain deputies in certain departments as well. And then Amanda has spoken to you about some internal, external equity pay adjustments. We also have the rural library allocation. If you remember, they had requested a 10% increase at a minimum, I guess, and that is what I have incorporated in the draft of the budget you have. That was an additional 17,000, if I remember correctly. And then, of course, always need to look at capital requests again.
And did that library, did that include, they had like a one-time request?
They did request funding for Dolly Parton. I, I do not have that in here right now. I think we need to have Mike look at that, because they specifically referred to it as a donation.
Right.
And I'm uncomfortable with that under the thing that we can't make donations, number one, and so I just think there's a little more work to be done on that.
So for now, yeah, could be included, but needs to be determined.
Okay, correct, yep.
Initially, we thought we could take ARP funding for that, but the rules changed, but I see the rules are changing again, allow more discretion in our ability to fund some stuff, correct?
We have heard that, I don't believe the final rules have been issued yet, so yeah, we are all waiting kind of anxiously to see how, how much they relax those. The, the first things that I've heard, while they do allow some more things, it's, it didn't feel like a lot more things for counties, so we're just waiting to see what's in those final rules, so that we can figure out what exactly can we do with that money. That is another big topic to continue that discussion that I don't have on this immediate budget conversation.
And we don't have any idea when those rules are, nobody's heard anything.
The expectation was February, so let's hope by the end, I mean, that could mean the 28th, we don't know, but that's like just a couple more weeks, so hopefully that will be very soon. Yeah. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to stop sharing this for a minute, because I will show some of the documents that I'm thinking you need to, want to look at, I should say. There we go. We've seen this a couple times now. Except I did have to make a correction on the Health Department, because I didn't have my FTEs right. Oh, this is an old version, doggone it. Yeah, sorry, didn't grab the right one here. Let's try that one more time. I've been trying to put things on my desktop and open them before I get in here, but I blew it on that one. Well, the total, I'll get that sent to you, you should have the correct one in your packets. So the total request for FTEs is really 5.1. Oh, and it's approximately $500,000, I think, and I can.
491, 397.
Yeah, I think that's correct. Yep, so we can talk through that here. Adding a full-time dental hygienist, and that is expected to generate additional revenues. Adding a full-time community health worker, a .5 time preparedness coordinator, and that is a full-time position, but would be being split with the emergency management agency. And then they had a grant that would pay for four tenths of a public health nurse, and they, that was at .3, so we're adding that one tenth, because it's paid with the grant anyway. And then we were transferring .5 time for the public health information analyst to the IT department.
And that position that was shared with EMA, too, was grant funded?
Oh, yeah, I believe it is, yes, and I think that grant is in their budget, which is why I didn't show it on here. I only showed, first, when Caitlin first turned in her budget, they were still working on researching how much revenue would come from the addition of the dental hygienist, so they didn't have that in their budget, if you remember. So that's why I put that revenue on here, because I think it, if we approved that position, I think that revenue should be added to their budget, because we would expect that to happen. So that's why that looks a little different, even though some of the other positions may be grant-funded, I, I believe their grant funding was already in their requested budget. And so then the next one we have is the marketing coordinator, and then the naturalist for conservation, and they also asked for a modest increase in their seasonal worker pay, so they can get seasonal workers. And then you can see adding the .5 FTE to information technology. And then we had restructurings in two other departments, the county attorney's office, using 2.5 vacant positions to create one full-time victim witness coordinator position, and then in human resources, reevaluating the staff and reassigning them to different classifications. That does come with some pay adjustments, and then also potentially adding a .5 intern. So that's how we got to the 5.1. And the total cost is 490, 491,000, and then if we take out that 60,000 of additional revenue, that net cost becomes 431,000.
These numbers included in the earlier budgets that we talked about as far as tax askings?
Yes.
Is this above and beyond?
Nope, these are already incorporated in all those numbers. The one thing I'll have to double-check is if I've got that 60,000 of additional revenue in there for health, I, I need to double-check that, but the costs are definitely in there.
So everything we're going over then here on this list, or is already included in the budget?
Yes, yep. Yep, that's, that's the approach I tried to take, was to go through all the detailed departments and, and review those, and then now I'm trying to pull together the summary so you can see the big picture of where we're at.
Okay, and then the reserves you talked about are going to be roughly, askings out of the reserves are anywhere from 2.5 to 3 million, is that correct?
If you chose to do everything, and you chose to do it in the way that I've presented it, you know, I know you have other choices to make, you may want to change some of those capital requests, that's one option, or maybe we want to issue debt, that would be another option. But those are, those are the, just some of the decisions that you have before you.
But you, could you tell if, when we had our update from our auditors, we were sitting at about 73% reserves, taking 3 million out of there, what would that drop that down to?
I was going to check that, and I didn't get that done this morning.
Yesterday, sorry, I didn't.
We, I thought about it, too, that I, there was, yeah.
We knew we were like about 27 million or a little less, and then 3 million from that, but what's that percentage, yeah?
Yeah, if we took 3.6 million, well, I'll, let me get back to you on that, so I tell you the right number, because I'm going to mess that up. I'll get back to you, you'll still be, that'll still be a very healthy number, but we would definitely, we'd definitely be taking a bite out of it with the capital projects. My suspicion and hope is that even with that turnover amount, that we wouldn't dip into it, but, you know, we don't know, that's the difficult thing.
So the cap is going to be above and beyond the 3.6 million?
No, no, that's part of the 3.6.
That's part of it?
Yep, 2.6, actually, of it.
This is the first time we've ever done that.
I, I think personally, it's a good, good area to be paying for some of this stuff, because I've always contended our reserves are way too high anyway, and I'll go as far as even say there should be no tax increase. I think we ought to, if there is an increase of tax askings, they need to be bought down by the reserves also.
Okay. You mean, fund everything and then not have to cut anything?
That's way too much money in the reserves. I mean, basically, we're using the taxpayers' money is what we're doing.
Oh, for sure.
It's insane to have 70-some percent in the reserves.
But not to fund operating.
Well, whatever the ending number's going to be, Dan, and I don't know if we know that right now, I don't have the problem with the request so far on the reserves of 3.6, but if there's any kind of a tax increase, I think we need to buy that number down, because when you have such high reserves, we shouldn't be having any tax increase, regardless how small it is, or whatever.
And I could see, I mean, like, as an example, and the budgets are so complicated, but I'm going to use Kasey Lake as an example, I mean, that'd be a perfect project to use reserves.
I agree, yep. There are many that would be. The, the one thing that I, a couple things that would just concern me for the future, certainly, we could use reserves this year, because we, we know they're very high. I agree that they're higher than they need to be. My concerns with using a lot of those reserves to fund recurring annual operating costs are, when we get that down to a level that we don't want to keep decreasing it, then you have a huge tax increase.
Right.
And that is really hard for taxpayers to swallow at that point, and us, for that matter. And the other issue that I think I will go ahead and bring up is, there are bills, study bills in the legislature that are talking about putting some really difficult reductions on our taxing capabilities going forward. And one of those talks about you will get automatic reductions in your valuations or something, if you increase your tax collections by more than 2.5%. So if we would kind of artificially lower our taxes this year, because we're using reserves to fund operating, that will also impact future years if some of those proposed laws actually are enacted, and, you know.
That just seems like a poor policy, to use reserves to fund.
It's a dangerous policy. I'm much more comfortable with it with one-time things, even if we would have, and right now, I'm not sure I can think of one, but if we had one-time operating things, I would be much more comfortable with that, because it doesn't come back to affect your future budgeting.
It is, you're correct, Dan, it, it is dangerous, and I've seen local other governments do that, and they're in trouble.
Right.
I can't recall a huge tax increase in Baca County in a long time. So you don't want to use reserves to, to buy down that number, so call it, but at the same token, there ain't nobody ever sitting with a number like this. For years, we were right around that 30%, 32%, and the auditors at that time saying that was the norm, we're at a ridiculously high amount, and with all due respect to Michelle, I haven't met a finance director that doesn't love that number high, because it makes their job a whole lot easier over the years.
Yeah.
But there's a reason why that number's high, and it's simply because we've overtaxed. And I think we need to come to some kind of agreement on what level that we want to bring that down to, and I think we're going to be fine. But yeah, you never want to have to use reserves to buy that number down, but in this case here, it, it's just, it's really ridiculous on how high reserves we let it get, and there's some reasons. The commercial backfill, even though they were filling it and telling us that it was going to end, we were still budgeting and taxing for that every year, and that's how some of that. And that's how some of that reserves got up there. So I agree with you, Dan, but in this case here, I think it would be insane to have a tax increase when you're sitting with reserves like we have. We just need to find that magical number where we want to keep it for the rainy day.
And the things that we can do, because we can assign some of those funds to different areas too, that we take them out of the general, the general fund, but still keep them available for us to use for information technology or-
Yes, I, yes.
Other things that we-
I think that we know with the space study and some other things we have going on, we do have some large capital needs out there. They're not all reflected in that. And I will remind you, Tom, I am suggesting you use 3.6 million of those reserves.
And I would point out-
You know, too, but look at all that ARPA money that we still got laying there that we haven't finished.
Right. You're right. We do. And-
We've got a lot of money laying there, that ARPA, that could be funding a lot of these projects in these departments. And we need to utilize that money.
We are working on that and that, we will continue to bring you projects that, I have not had enough brain power, I guess, to really dive into that as much as I would have liked during the budget. But once we get this sorted out, we, we will be working hard to get that. We've got to get a plan in place to get that all spent. You know, we're looking at December 24. We have to have our plan done and every, everything obligated, which means bid contracts. We have a lot of work to do with that over the next 18 months.
And we, we can do a lot of good things with it. We can make a lot of good improvements that normally we would have to tax for it. The only key there is the projects that we do approve, the large projects, they're sustainable and we don't have to raise taxes next year to sustain it, whether it be with employees or whatever. So it, it's kind of a catchy thing, but I think there's areas we can spend that money and I think we need to utilize it. But we got a lot of money sitting on the plate right now. And that's why I have a strong belief that we should have no tax increase this year.
Oh, sure. It does sound good. I was going to say, I remember, I think we probably get caught up in the times too with the $3 million we got from Country View. At one time, we talked about having meetings and seeing if we shouldn't designate that into certain categories or for use or something too that would be good for the community or whatever and that would-
Yeah, that would be something.
And we invested some in solar, but, but that ended up being a lot cheaper than even our initial investment, which that had most of us behind up here. And I'll just point out, you know, this budget does do, to get to the point of not adding too much to the reserves every year, you know, the, the using that, that rollover fund, that actually is, is a pretty effective tool, I think, for making sure that we're not, you know, overtaxing every year. So that's a big change here to the reserves happening this year in this budget that's going to really have an impact going forward. And now, you know, we did, we used to, you know, tax reportion anticipating about the rollback being taken away, but now it's, it's finally gone. So we, we're not least beholden to that aspect of what-
That's true. I have-
Nonsense they're going to cook up in Des Moines.
I have estimates in here based on what we know. We know we'll get 712,000 in that commercial industrial rollback. And I have estimated how it will be split between the levies, so I may have to tweak that between the levies, but the amount will be the same. And I have put in an estimate for, one thing that kind of got slipped in the law last year was eliminating the business property tax credit. That's another negative thing that we have coming at us in the future. They are agreeing, it sounds like, to replace that for at least a year or two. So I have put an estimate that we will get that in this budget. So, yeah, I'm trying, I think we can take a little more risk, I guess I'll call it, with those kind of estimates because we do have reserves. And Tom's correct. If our reserves were lower, I'd be, I would be being more conservative about that. That's true.
And with, with this much of the capital coming on reserves, are we, do you have a, a dollar amount of what we're, how much reserves were, or how much capital we're taxing for each year? Because at some level, there's, there's some level of capital that is ongoing every year.
I have not spent enough time with that in prior years. There really wasn't very much last year because while there were requests, most of them got pulled back and hoped to be funded with ARPA. So I, I can get back to you on that. I don't know today.
There's quite a bit of planning, or some of this planning we're talking about too. As soon as we got through budget, we were hoping to do, right, Michelle? I mean, that was one of our goals, for setting up some strategic planning on that.
Yeah.
Michelle, did you say there is a commercial backfill for FY '24?
There is. If you remember, they gave us eight years to phase that out. So now, instead of it being an estimate that they'll decide what they're going to pay, we already know how much, it's going to, keeps going down. Last year, I believe, for this year, I think our payment was about 831,000 supposed to be. Goes down to 712 next year and then it continues to decline over the next several years.
Do you budget for any of it?
I budgeted for the 712 that we're going to receive. Yep.
That's it.
Okay. Nothing above and beyond?
Nope. Nope. That was nice because we have, we know what that amount is, so it was easy to do this time.
I believe the whole thing, when it's said and done, is going to be about a million-dollar loss to us.
That's true. From the beginning. Yep. And now taking away the business property tax credit, it's probably the equivalent of that.
But look at all the great economic activity it stimulated.
All the girls.
Yeah, didn't do any, didn't do any Bakka-
We're kind of waiting.
No, it didn't.
Yeah. Someday. Sure didn't work. So are you going to go over some of this capital and that type of thing or is those, are those just sheets provided for us to-
You know, I just provided them. I thought, we've talked about them quite a bit. I thought maybe at this point you just want to review them and I thought it might be easier if I redistributed those copies today.
Okay.
Well, maybe next, I don't know which, how you want to tackle the topics on that list going forward, but I think those are the topics we need to discuss at some point. I would suggest that maybe we would go ahead and set the date for that maximum levy hearing, possibly on Tuesday.
Set the date?
Yeah. And then it would, I would anticipate that hearing not being until March 13th unless, you know, no, I think we should go ahead with that one and not wait for the formal revaluations.
So everybody's probably all right with that, putting on Tuesday's agenda? Okay. So then we can have that language and everything on there.
Yep. We'll get that done.
Good for you, Tom, as well?
Yeah, we got you. Guys, move on.
Any questions, comments, things we want to be sure to have for Tuesday or, I guess?
Give me my homework.
Yeah. Amanda's getting us information-
Yes.
-regard to the compensation board's recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you have a total cost of that too, Michelle, like I emailed the other day on the total cost on all the recommendations?
Amanda, I think Amanda has it for the, the elected officials. Is that what you mean?
No, for everything, the reclassifications, the whole ball, everything.
Sure. Well, we had about, it was 60 for what I recommended on Tuesday. That was about 60,000 just in wages. We didn't talk about FICA or IFRS.
Right.
Will need to be adjusted for that.
That part, that part I've, I have budgeted for 250,000 for the pay adjustments and the potential for the reclassification study. And then in addition to that is the elected officials and that's the number I can't remember right now.
So just wages with 10% to the elected officials that are not the board, 3% to the board, and then that would be the percentage deputies. That's about $177,000 of just wages, not FICA and IFRS. So probably over 200,000.
Yeah. And that's, and that is all in the draft that you have for the elected officials.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about elected officials. When's the board going to talk about that? Because we haven't had any discussion. This is all just the compensation board.
Yeah. Probably, whenever you want.
I'm assuming Tuesday we'll start knocking off some of that stuff.
Yeah. As, as we feel like that we've got a close enough estimate on what the revaluations will be, then, then I'm comfortable.
Yeah. I'm guessing Tim's estimate's really close. Not perfect.
We're counting on it, Tim.
Yeah. I'm putting pressure on him now.
Yeah, that will help too. Yeah. Give us an accurate picture. So, and we'll have that information, I think, by Tuesday we're supposed to too from Amanda. So thank you. Anything else? No questions, no comments? We want to move out of this? Okay. And just ask for a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All the same sign, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.